If I get elected.
So officially up for him, we need nine votes and we have nine votes. We also have to have a member from each of our three communities and we also have a member from each of our three communities. So we do have a quorum. So I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM and entertain a motion to open the public budget hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Done.
Alright, so we're officially in the public budget hearing. If there's anyone here tonight who would like to speak to us about our FY '21 budget, you can up the floor now, but then you better like to take the floor.
Do you want to?
Hi, thank you. So I just had a statement from the union on the budget. So research has consistently shown that the single most important school-based factor in student achievement is teacher quality. On reading and math tests estimated that teachers have two to three times the effect of any other school-based factor, including services, facilities, and even leadership. This is why it's so important that Silver Lake's budget focuses on attracting and retaining great teachers. One way of achieving this goal is by ensuring that teacher salaries remain competitive with local districts so that the best and brightest are more likely to choose to teach here. Another way is by making sure that we don't lose some of our most talented new teachers to reductions in force. The budget, as the version two was presented, seems to be telling the exact fact that's most important to student achievement and I would urge the school committee to direct the superintendent to reexamine the budget and make cuts in areas that have less of a direct impact to student success. I'm not sure if the committee was all made aware of some proposed cuts that may be taking place that haven't been introduced yet, but I do have a statement from the middle school English teachers, if you wouldn't mind me reading that. So this statement is being presented in response to the proposed changes that affect both the middle and high school at Silver Lake. More specifically, these changes involve revamping the 21st century literacy class at the middle school and integrating the class into the seventh grade curriculum. These changes may seem simple and a possible way to save the community some money, but these changes will remove educators from their areas of expertise and instead they'll be forced to create a curriculum in which they are not seasoned. This will be a struggle and a detriment to the students in these classrooms. Over the years, the data from countless research studies has shown that the quality of a teacher has a direct impact on student performance. The work of a teacher with strong content knowledge who implements and upholds clear classroom routines and procedures and provides a nurturing, safe environment for students makes a positive impact on student achievement. This correlation is disputable. In the eighth grade English department at Silver Lake, we have found that in addition to having a positive impact on student learning as individual educators, given the high expectations we hold ourselves to, we've collectively had more of a positive impact on student learning as a result of the efforts we've made to work collaboratively. Speaking more specifically, we have authentically created all four of our units from scratch. We've collaborated to have these units fall under the Euro on theme of social justice. We have spent countless hours working together to create curriculum, lessons, and activities that cater to our students' specific needs and tie into our four central questions on social justice while also being aligned with the common core standards. We all teach the same units and read the same novels. In addition, we collaborate to create common assessments and we often meet to share student work and reflect on their progress. Removing us from the equation would be a detriment to the EDPLA department and to our students. We have all equally been an integral part of the planning, research, and creation process of our curriculum and therefore we believe we are the best suited to provide the instruction to our students. In conclusion, we'd like to thank the school committee for your time and for listening to our concerns. We kindly ask you to consider the situation, our point of view, and what is the best outcome for the middle school and our students. And that statement's from Lauren Jenkins, Kathleen Clemm, and Elizabeth Casey, who are the eighth grade ELA teachers.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak on the Silver Lake Regional Schools budget?
Hi, I'm Charlie Sealigtown, administrator over in Halifax. I do appreciate how difficult a job you've had with this budget season. It's great that every month or every meeting you have an opportunity to celebrate what's best about Silver Lake, students, and its faculty and staff. I don't know who's coming up tonight, you know, with awards or announcements, great things, but it's probably one of the best parts of the job. And doing the budget's probably one of the worst parts of the job. And doing a budget where you're having to cut back incrementally, piece by piece, making a part Silver Lake school system in order to try and find some happy medium between what the towns can afford and what our students need is a very difficult proposition, especially given that almost every single dollar of increase in the budget from year to year right now is a dollar that's coming from the three communities. We're getting very little money from the state, or I could say we are getting very little money from the state since obviously the three towns are directly affected by the lack of aid through chapter 74. And because you're having to make decisions that in some cases may be cuts and you're competing against charter schools that on average don't have to spend as much money per student because they don't have to offer the full range of services that Silver Lake does to all types of students, you're competing at that disadvantage. And every cut here is a gain for charter schools, another encouragement for parents to take their children out of Silver Lake and into other schools with the accompanying money and get into that spiral of debt. So I can't come to you and say, yo, this is a terrible budget. You know, you didn't cut enough, you cut a lot. But at the same time, the problem is that it still results in what looked like to me on an assessment was about 3.2% increase in the assessment among the three communities. That number by itself isn't too terrible, it's not what I would have hoped for. I was hoping when we talked a couple of months ago for something more, two to two and a half, which on the face of it probably is unrealistic from the school's end, but it's what maybe the three communities can afford in the long term because compound interest just helps accumulating and we're at some point not going to be able to afford this. And I look at the number for Halifax and I say, oh, that's a great number, but it's not exactly what it is. Why? Because some of the expenses for Silver Lake were buffed and turfed into the shared costs. So our assessment really is this number plus money that Halifax Elementary now has to come up with that it didn't for fiscal '20. And then we also have the middle school resource officer, which if town does vote for it, is in essence another part of the assessment, but simply not in the package. Last year, we had a fairly long and energetic conversation about the resource officers. And the consensus then in Halifax and the consensus still in Halifax is that if we were to have resource officers setting aside any policy discussion, but if we're going to do this, it should be in the Silver Lake budget, both the high school and the middle school, and the three towns combined should be paying for it. It's a school program, it should be clearly delineated as part of the Silver Lake budget. We had that conversation last year and I did have some hopes that given that conversation, even though it was late in the budget cycle, that there was some interest at that time to say, okay, let's continue this discussion. Let's talk with the three towns about putting those resource officers into the budget and clearly adding it as a school cost. Because it doesn't really matter one way or the other in terms of the money's the money, but this way it's where it should be as part of the school budget rather than some subline item or separate article at the Halifax Town Meeting. So as much as I appreciate the 1.2, it probably isn't a 1.2. It's probably something else. I don't know what it is because this doesn't clearly delineate how much money has been moved to the three elementary school systems. But my worry is really two or three years down the road because that's when the repo men are going to come. They're going to come knock on my door and they're going to say, we don't care that you might have to give up a police officer or a firefighter or a teacher at the elementary school or a librarian or receptionist at the council and agent. They're going to say, we're going to take something away from you, are you going to pay up? Because two or three years from now, Halifax isn't going to be seeing a 1.2% increase or a 1.5% increase. We're going to see that Kingston size increase because our share of the school population is going to start drifting up again. And at that point, we are going to give up something. We're going to give up either people or we're going to give up something else, maybe something nebulous like a general wage increase so that only some employees in Halifax or some employees in Silver Lake will get a pay increase, but everybody else won't because that's the sacrifice we're going to make in order to continue to fund them. And I understand that charge fully with you. We've talked to legislators, both our state senator and our state rep, and tried to point out to them that the chapter 74 formula doesn't work, even the new one. The idea in my mind was we're raising all boats. And they said, well, your boat doesn't look like it's sinking too fast. We're going to help the city of Brockton. Well, it looks like they helped the city of Brockton, they really did it. Why? Yep, chapter 70 went up 10%, charter school 25%. I can see how fast they're going to have to bail out in Brockton. They're not in Boston yet. Boston is paying more in charter school money than they are actually getting in chapter 70. So we've got several problems with chapter 70, charter schools in general, but also just the amount of money that's going to all school systems. Now maybe things will improve during the next few years, but until I see some real hard numbers from the state, some guarantees, I have to worry about that. It's going to be very difficult for me to go to town meeting in May and say to people, you should vote against the Silver Lake budget. I'm not saying that I'm going to do that because I don't know that I'm going to get up there and say something that's pointless. We have long enough town meetings as it is. I don't want to spend more time there than anybody else does. But I'm probably going to have to say, it's easy right now. We got an easy assessment. But I want you, the townspeople in Halifax, to understand that this budget isn't going to suddenly switch simply because two or three years down the road Halifax has more students in terms of percentage than it does right now. We're going to be paying for this budget and the other budgets later on in a lot more and we're going to give something up. So I'm not complaining in the sense of you should bring this down even further. I just want you to understand that I realize that a few years down the road, I'm going to be coming in here and saying very possibly I am going to go on town meeting floor and say, vote no against this. It might be meaningless then because Plimpton and Kingston may be able to afford it then. But I can see the future. I've been down this road before after 24 years working for the town. And it's not that hard to see what's going to happen. So I do appreciate all the work you did. I appreciate the difficult decisions you had to make and the challenges that all of us face because what hurts Silver Lake hurts us. I mean, I can even in a sense say what hurts Brockton hurts us in that Brockton going downhill doesn't help the region as a whole. Silver Lake going downhill doesn't help Halifax either. And I don't have any good solutions any more possibly than any of you do. You know, I've done what I can. I'm not quite sure how much more I can do to try and convince our state legislators that this isn't working. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Kyle Pike, the chairman of the finance committee in Kingston. I too have some concerns and I reiterate some of the things that Charlie just said. I recognize what a difficult challenge this is. I do not like ever standing up in front of any school committee and saying that, you know, it's getting more and more difficult to afford it. I commend you from going from, and I'm looking at just the bottom line expenses, not looking at the assessments. As you know, I have said before that I'm as interested in the bottom line expenses as I am in the assessments because I believe that, you know, the assessments are what they are based upon the percentage of students that Kingston has versus Halifax and Plimpton, the required minimum contribution to education, et cetera. So I do commend you for starting with a budget, a bottom line expense increase of over 3.8%. I really guess I'm commending the administration because these first passes are what they handle. They went from 3.84 to 3.34 and now I understand the budget that we'll be looking at is at 2.91%. That still is difficult that we are really challenging our other departments to come in at around two and a half percent. I challenged our local school committee and local school administration to take another hard look at their budget because they're at 2.99%. They chose to stay there. I suggested that we should just take a look. I said, we're not looking for any reductions, but take a second and a third look at some of the higher numbers like special ed, like pensions, some of those numbers that maybe would have been conservative, transportation, and see if we could find something else. They chose not to. And so I am concerned that that's a budget that we have to sell to not only town meeting, but to town government leaders, to the board of selectmen, to the town administration. So I can, again, commend you for getting to 2.9. Now, I would have liked to seen Silver Lake at the same 2.7% or so that I was asking our local schools to. That difference is only 50, 60K so that I'm not going to make a big deal out of that. But I do want to reiterate that with the bottom lines, year after year after year, targeting 3% or thereabouts, okay, it makes it difficult to be sustainable in the long run. And to put that into a little bit of a perspective, in Kingston, the average tax bill for real estate is somewhere around $6,500. If we have 3% across the board for all departments, all functions, schools, police, fire, and everything, et cetera, that's an automatic $200 or so per household increase in taxes. And when we see that year after year after year, we have more and more people having a complaint and saying, it's just not sustainable. So again, I will just emphasize that I believe you people have done a great job in trying to get to a budget that we can all live with. And I certainly will be part of the group in Kingston trying to sell that this is a reasonable bottom line budget. It's unfortunate that Kingston's probably looking at 4% plus assessment increase thereabouts.
Four and a half.
4.5%. And but again, I look at it that you have a 2.9% bottom line and the fact that we have more students, you know, I've got to get more of my neighbors to send their kids, not to charter schools where it really kills me, but send them to private schools where it doesn't impact the cost here and I get less of a percentage of the total. So again, thank you all for your great work and we in Kingston will continue to try to support the schools the very best we can.
Hi, I'm Dr. Melinda Tarsi. I'm the chair of the finance committee in Halifax. Thank you to the committee for letting us appear tonight. I want to echo Charlie's concerns that Halifax has expressed concerning the budget, but focus more specifically on the part-time school resource officer for the middle school. As Charlie mentioned, we had the conversation last year concerning the structure of the financing and we had hoped that given a year more of talking and development that we'd be able to find a way to successfully negotiate an agreement that would allow us to place the cost for the part-time SRO into the assessment and to work out more equitable arrangement among the police departments. As we understand it, there hasn't been a significant change in the approach that's being taken and that this is going to be placed as an article again this year at the Halifax annual town meeting. Last year, the finance committee opposed the principle of putting a position in as an article for two major reasons. Number one, obviously, is that it's only funded the annual town meeting, meaning that if at subsequent annual town meetings, the residents vote it down, then we are no longer contributing to that particular service or that particular position. And that should be something that concerns the committee even more so necessarily than Halifax. But second, and philosophically, we don't believe that Silver Lake should be able to introduce articles with positions when we don't allow any other departments in our town to do so. We've been turning away departments from legitimate requests for additional positions, departments that haven't been able to increase their personnel in years even through demonstrated need. And while we don't doubt the need for this position and we certainly appreciate that you've done your homework and done your research in this regard, we ask again that it please be placed within the budget and not be placed outside as a separate article. We've also been starting to reach out to other towns to look at the way that they, that other regional school districts have negotiated their agreements between police officers and police departments. And I know that our police chief has submitted a letter to our finance committee and I think to you as well that echoes the concerns that we have about the particular financing structure. So again, thank you for your work and I would like to continue to have this conversation about how we can make the structure work when it's a, we all have the same end goal of protecting students and having this position exist, but I don't think that we all see eye to eye on the best way to get to that endpoint. So thank you again.
So anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on the Silver Lake budget for FY[1278.16][1278.16]'21? Since we go further participation, I'll entertain a motion to close the public budget hearing. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
We're going to skip over public participation right now so we can have our students entertain us a little bit, but then we'll come back to anybody else who'd like to address the committee for any other reason outside of the budget. So gentlemen.
Yes, so I'd just like to introduce Ms. Peet, who's our teacher at middle school who does one job with our students and our school. And we have some of our students here to present that they're going to have a mural that's going to last as they begin our school and they're here to present and back to you guys. So this will be.
Hi, thank you for having us. Yeah, Camara Hee. These are six of my eighth grade students that all take our class and maybe some of them have you twice a day. And they from the beginning of the year really were interested in creating murals, something that could be long lasting throughout Silver Lake's history. So we all came up with some ideas and the idea that they're going to present to you was actually completely done on their own, with nothing of what I thought would be the scott of it and came up so much better than my own ideas. So I'm very happy to have them present it to you one day. And let them take away.
So our mural design is a major scenery that consists of every team's possible logo from 71 to 83. And we wanted to incorporate the team so that they'll be part of the mural and the rest. We decided on a nature theme because all of the students have a logo that is found in nature and without it would represent the adventurous students go through and the aggressive school. We didn't want the logo to be obvious and the students can search their teams out. And overall, we're hoping that this mural will be able to bring more unity to the teams and the school together.
We decided that we'll paint the mural in our hallway. The size will be 6.25 feet by 15.5 feet. We're going to leave some space for the students next year, either create a new mural or add onto this one and it will be an ongoing project. The path is for the seventh grade pathers. The owl is for the 7th grade young ones. The shark is for the seventh grade silver sharks.
The cheetah is for the Asian seekers. The cyclone is for the eight two cyclones. And the stars is for the eight three gold stars.
So what they're showing you now is their sketch and then their plan on how they're going to transfer it over. They want to actually freeze our art on, so they've gridded it out. It's frozen in the hallway as well. So they're just really hoping to get approval to move forward and continue, it actually gave us a grant. So they're funding the supplies for the mural and so we're just hoping that you enjoy that and we can move forward.
Who wants the honor of making that motion?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So when would you work on this? Would you work on it during art class, after school, all the time?
So they're all part of art club, which happens on Tuesdays and then I'm after school every day. So they will be able to work on our club after school and then if they finish projecting class, they can work on it as well. Since it's in the art hallway, I can monitor that at the scene.
Awesome. Can't wait to see it.
So I'm going to let the motions go through before there's any further discussion.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Do we have a second? Further discussion, comments?
I would just like to thank them for their emphasis on unity and their community. I think that's a beautiful theme and I think it's inspirational. Even all of them.
I appreciate your leadership coming before us tonight to push this for your classmates and to beautify our school for years to come. So thank you for your leadership. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of approving this project? It's unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you.
I don't know if you noticed in that painting, but the vine was an SL.
I saw it.
So I didn't know if you saw that.
That's a lot of hidden vines.
I do want to say.
Sure, I'll want to see it when it's, and even as it's being.
Yeah. And I do also want to thank the school committee four or five years ago when we did redesign and came and I asked to expand our art so that it touched the seventh and eighth grade. That's with your continued support that these things are possible and that the expansion is then touching what you come back and see tonight. So again, thank you guys for, you know, supporting the initiatives that we bring and the things that come back to you are directly a result of your support. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Jean. So we're going to move on to the public participation portion of today's meeting, which might seem redundant, but this is an open public participation for any items to discuss before the committee, if anybody would like to speak before us now. Please.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Drew. I'm a Spanish teacher here at the high school and I'm also the treasurer of our union. As we think about the numbers and we think about and we're crunching the budget and things like that, I want to make sure that we don't forget about what our teachers are doing day in and day out in our school. So I'm just going to read an email here that was sent to our teachers unsolicited from a parent. Dear Carpentry Team, I have to tell you how proud I was of Jimmy last night when I got home from work and saw his exploratory carpentry project. He did a beautiful job and he was beaming about it. I am quite impressed that the carpentry teachers took the exploratory students through a project as complex as this in a short period of time. Not only did he have to incorporate safety training, best practices, and basic rough lumber processing, but he went the distance and got into raised panel machining and coping stick joints. This is by no means a simple, this is by no means simply a blue up cutting board or birdhouse project and it would give any aspiring student interested in woodworking industry a great intro. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public participation? Go ahead.
I also would like to share a letter to a teacher. I'm Ashley Ferrara. I teach in the English department here at the high school. This is to a Spanish teacher. Over the past three years, you have made a significant impact on my life. In my three years with you as a teacher, each day I've been excited to come to Spanish class. The activities that you do in class make it easy and interesting to learn how to speak Spanish. I know that every day when I come to Spanish, no matter how hard my day has been, you will be there supporting me and helping me get through the challenges that each new day brings. As a teacher, you really connect with your students. Many of my teachers in the past have not had this skill. I believe that you genuinely care about each and every one of your students, which is such a great quality to have. I do not know of any other teacher that would care enough to write a birthday card for each one of their students. As a teacher, you understand that each student is going through different things outside of school and you are very flexible with turning in assignments and redoing tests and quizzes. You understand that everyone has bad days and you give us a second chance to fix our mistakes. I'm writing this letter because you have had a significant impact in shaping me into the student I am today. Here at Silver Lake.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation?
I call and carry, teach physics mostly, also astronomy, environmental science. There's a lot of things. I wanted to share with you a letter that was sent to an English teacher here at the high school about going above and beyond. This came from a parent. I just wanted to thank you so much for taking the time out of your weekend on a Saturday morning to meet with my daughter to help her with her college essay. I am sure there are many things you could be doing on a Saturday morning. Your kindness and thoughtfulness is so greatly appreciated and shows such strong and true devotion to our students. My daughter came back from that meeting elated. We are so blessed and fortunate to have the faculty that we do at Silver Lake. I hope that you do not mind, but I have included Mrs. Gill in this email. I am sure she hears many of these stories and I wanted her to hear this one too. I hope that you are having a great year and congratulations on your, I'm going to leave that this for, but the season that they had.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public participation? Thank you very much. Anybody else for public participation? Go ahead.
I'm Michael Duke. I'm a special education and history teacher here at the high school. Yeah, this is a letter to a science teacher. I just wanted to thank you for making my freshman year more enjoyable and always offering your kindness to me. I was recently diagnosed with anxiety and sometimes found it unbearable to be in school, whether it was from throwing up to having a headache. I especially hated standing in the hallways in the mornings, and you always keeping your door open to let me do my homework and calm down in the mornings to talk. Basketball with you was a huge reason I got through this year. I will be sure to visit you next year and once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Go ahead. Thank you. All right, so seeing that there's no further public participation, we'll move on to the approval of our minutes from our January ninth, 2019 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes. So, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to accept and hold the executive session minutes from our January ninth, 2019 meeting.
The motion.
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous as well. Thank you. Ms. Gill, we're in your house.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. We've recently made some updates to our program of studies with the newly approved courses that the school committee helped us pass at the last meeting, so that is now live on our website. Megan McGovern, who's one of our guidance counselors, she sort of takes that on as a special project each year to make sure everything is updated, so I'd like to give her a special appreciation and thank you for doing that. Our guidance counselor will start going into our freshman, sophomore, and junior classes following February vacation. They go into the ELA classes. They can be sure to meet with students in small group settings to talk about sort of the options for course selections for the next school year. And then following that, that meeting, we open up the portal so that students can begin the course selection process. So, that will be happening in the next couple of weeks. Our eighth graders, our incoming freshmen, receive a similar presentation over at the middle school. This year, we've modified the presentation a little bit, so in addition to Ms. Donahue's presentation, our coordinators and our department chairs have put together a short little video, because we know how much everybody loves their videos, to share with the students as well, kind of highlighting our program of studies and what their options are in selecting courses. And we thought that video would be helpful as well for any parents who are unable to attend our parent night. We could have that available for them. Speaking of which, our eighth grade parents are invited to the high school on February 27th. We do an overview of our program of studies, the course selection process, and we really kind of talk about what the next four years look like for the students. They can start to wrap their head around it. Our coordinators and department chairs are there that evening to answer any questions and to speak specifically to their departments. Our allied health students recently, I think today, finished their allied health clinical, so I'd like to share a little bit about that as we're building our allied health program and their four-year course sequence. This was the next phase of that, and so our students in allied health three completed their clinical hours as they worked towards earning their CNA. So, we had different batches of students traveling each week. They got to go for three days over to Bay Path and Duxbury, who have a great cooperation and partnership with them. And they spent, you know, three full days on the floor working as nurses. And I had the opportunity to go over with Mr. Glass one day and Ms. McGovern just to kind of observe and meet the director and see the students in action. And it was the most amazing, most impressive thing I've seen in a long time. It was pretty incredible to see, you know, our students in their scrubs, set the scope around their neck, and it was like an episode out of Grey's Anatomy. They knew exactly what they were doing, where they were going. And Jake, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if you wanna share a little bit more about your experience, I think it's very valuable for everyone to hear.
Yeah, so today was the fourth and final day. It was, it went very well. No issues with anything, but for those of you who don't know what a CNA does in a nursing home, they feed the patients in the morning, they give them a bed bath, then they toilet them, and they brush their teeth, they, in certain days, they give them a shower. And then we had the opportunity to sit in on a few meetings about Medicare or Medicaid, and then potential risks for certain residents as well. And it truly was a really great experience, probably the best of my high school career. But, you know, I wanna thank all of you for, you know, allowing this to happen, and, you know, being so supportive of the allied health program. It means a lot to myself and all the other students as well. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jake. Big night for CTE last night. It was their annual open house. The CTE department hosts eighth graders and their families, our upcoming freshmen, not just from Kixon, but from like Pembroke, Duxbury, some surrounding towns as well attended. And it's an opportunity for Mr. Glass, the director, to highlight all of the programs. This year, they featured a short documentary-style video that highlighted all the programs. Ours was a little outdated because we didn't have allied health in it. And then after the presentation, the families were invited down to the shops. They had about an hour and a half just to go through all the shops, get tours. Our students volunteered last night, so they provided presentations, they did demonstrations. Culinary, of course, cooked a delicious meal for everybody to try. Our allied health students did a presentation and demonstrated some of the things that they've been learning. The greenhouse was in full bloom. It was very therapeutic to walk in there and just see all the green blooms there. And then our preschool teachers were there and students sort of highlighting their lesson plans and the curriculum that they do. It was just a great opportunity for our upcoming students to sort of help decide if this is something that they wanna apply for or not. And they ask great questions. It's a neat opportunity for us to meet some of our upcoming students too and just get to know them a little better, start to meet some new families. You know, if this is their first child coming to the high school, you know, some of them are a little anxious and nervous, I think, so it was an opportunity to get to know them as well. So, again, I'd like to thank all of our teachers and our guidance counselor and Ms. Allenowski, our CTE secretary, who all volunteered their time last night, as well as our student volunteers. And that is it for me tonight.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Gill? Thank you very much. Jen?
Yes, thank you. So, the first thing I just wanted to highlight was our anti-vaping presentation that happened on January 15th. It was titled "Vaping Me Crazy." The presentation addressed concerns regarding vaping and other behaviors that put our children at risk. And Michael DeLeon, I thought, did a very nice job talking about dangers of e-cigarettes, vaping, drooling, the threat that affects their brains, bodies, and the long-term health consequences. I really thought he did a nice job personalizing his story and also inserting the information that the students need to know and understand to keep them from making poor decisions and keep them on a path of making positive and productive decisions. So, I just wanna say that Michael DeLeon really had an impactful presentation to our students and to our parents. So, that I thought really hit something that was a need for our district. So, again, I hate to say it, but kids are making these decisions at the middle school, and it's a scary thing. And I think the more information that we give to our parents and our students helps support making good decisions, so.
If you don't mind, hang on to Jill earlier this week to put under old business addressing the vaping impact on our students and our schools. And that was based upon, yeah, we're talking about trying some new methods in helping students who are caught vaping in school, and also the program you were running. I had some indication from the attorney general. She was gonna be launching her lawsuit, and that did come out this week. So, we are part of that through a vote that this committee has taken that will participate in any capacity that the attorney general asks us to in cooperation with the state. I was down in DC two weeks ago at a national school boards conference, and there's actually a private law firm right now who is also going after Jewel for similar concerns. The interesting thing about their cases, they get 25% of the damages, and they know nobody works for free, but I still think that we're probably more interested in putting our hat in with our attorney general at this point. I can bring forth some of the information from the law firm that's putting together their lawsuit as well to look into it, but I want to continue to log you for what you're doing to take care of our students in this epidemic that's confronting them. So, Mike and I, we're happy to come and watch that presentation, and we hope that it's an ongoing discussion at both schools with all of our kids and all of our parents and our communities. So, thank you for doing that, both.
Thank you for coming, Jason and Michael. Thanks for putting it out.
Yeah, it was great. It was great.
Yeah. I really thought it was one of the more powerful speakers that we had come in to talk about something significant. And it definitely resonated with the students and with the teachers. And the teachers had come to see me after. Sometimes our teachers can be, you know, very forthright in their feedback, and they were very positive about what they thought he presented. And I had students that I'd meet with because they are at risk, and they had come to see me after the presentation to talk to me about some of those things that he presented. So, it was impactful. I'm gonna move on to mentoring. So, one of the things that we had started up this year was a mentoring program, and I do thank Renee Donahue for helping to facilitate that for us. One of the things we wanna do is try to reach out, again, find ways to re-engage some of our at-risk students. And this was something that Joy and I had talked about towards the end of last year and through the summer. And again, so mentoring can help students feel more connected to the school, find a greater success both personally and academically. It provides a student with an adult in the building who is focused on him or her as an individual and not as a student. The mentoring program seeks to build connections to help at-risk students develop their potential. And our pilot program has involved training our volunteer staff members and taking inventories to help for the, to make the mentoring connection. And this week, three of our students were matched up with their mentors, and will begin the mentoring process after February break. So, I'll continue to report out on that, but very excited to see that move off. And I do thank our teachers who are volunteering to help support this very important initiative to help our at-risk students. So, thank you for that. Program of studies, so I had a minor edit that I had put in. It involves our seventh grade rounds class. So, in my conversations with Scott Farrell, who's our science coordinator, he had rewritten the seventh grade rounds description that's for our program of studies, and he did it because it better aligns with what we're actually doing in the classroom. You know, our seventh grade tech engineering teacher has now brought in Project Lead the Way. He's been certified for design and modeling, which is a certification process, which we were able to use through our PNE grant that we got. And so, anyway, so that really initiated the rewrite. So, I was just hoping to get approval to go ahead with that.
The Alliance Barre approved the next generation science standards as well, so. Entertain a motion to accept the rewritten grade seven, five science.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second? More? Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, I just a couple of quick updates. So, we had our talent show on the 31st. It's always phenomenal event. They do such a great job. They get up there and they put their talents on show for the rest of the school, and they really did a great job. And I thank Dave Murphy, and I thank our students going up there. We had someone go up and do ballet dance. We had someone go up and sing. We had someone that was playing the piano, and then we had someone playing the guitar. Well, someone else sang, and they did it and sang. It was just a wonderful night to see kids come together and support one another. So, that was on January 31st. We had our honor roll recognition. That was today, so we did that. I wanna congratulate our students during the honor roll recognition. Doing a great job. We had our geography bee. Twenty-two of our students participated. Connor O'Brien, congratulations, won. Wyatt Rosano was in second place. Congratulations to him. Michael DePona came in third. Congratulations to him. On the 7th, which was not too long ago now, but the principal's luncheon, so that's when I eat with our students. So, what happens at principal's luncheon is that we have three students that are nominated from each team, and they are nominated for citizenship, academic excellence, and academic achievement. And from that nomination, they get the opportunity to come and eat lunch with me. And we talk about the school. They talk about the things they really love about the school. They talk about things that they say, "That would be great if we could do this." So, it really is kind of a lively conversation. We have pizza. And then they get a certificate, and then they get a pin for being presented. And it really is a circular thing because their teachers are nominating them for that award. So, so anyway, I just wanna make mention that we had that on the 7th, and we do that every term. And it's really a nice time for me. I get to spend time with students and talk about some of their things that brought them to the principal's lunch. So, that was on the 7th. And that's it for me. So, thank you.
Jen, any questions for Jen? Thank you very much for leaving out your business agency, your career, your skill.
Thank you. In your package note, you will find your financial. The budget is still doing a nice job of maintaining the financial needs of the district so far this year. There are several small deficits that total about $7,000 that will be absorbed within their categories. The only exception to that is homeless transportation has started to become an issue when it's become a deficit at both the middle school and the high school. And I expect that will continue. But we will do our best to manage it and make it work within the budget. Other than that, there's not much excitement in the budget. Are there any questions? If you have any, please let me know. Thank you.
All right, seeing no questions, we move on to the superintendent's report.
Hello, hello. Great, thank you. I'd like to introduce you to our assistant superintendent. You've been introduced before, but this is his first official meeting here with us tonight. To say that he has started hitting the ground running would be an understatement. In addition to the events of last Friday, he certainly was a welcomed and much-needed member of our team in response, and his experiences as a former principal were recognized and validated by the amount of feedback we've received from people who have appreciated his support during that event. But in addition to that, he, his first day was working with our second cohort, who's doing backbones design curriculum. As I've said before, Ryan has a wealth of knowledge with curriculum development. And so, this is, UPD is pretty routine for Ryan, but nonetheless, he has started with cohort two. On our second day, because we had understanding buddies on Ryan's first day, we went around and visited all the schools, including the high school and middle school, where we were welcomed, and we met with teachers and students and the principals, and it was just a wonderful day for us. He has already had his first meeting with his curriculum coordinators, and he's already had, today was his first professional development council, and they are working on finalizing the details for our February professional development. We will be having a keynote from Alan November on using technology to meet the diverse needs of students. And then we will be having workshops, which are provided by vendors that we currently work with who provide workshops for us for free, but also our teacher volunteers and our administrative volunteers who have their own expertise with different pieces of technology and talking about best practices. So, that, they're working on that right now. And I'd just like to say he has been a tremendous support to me, as has the administrative team, Lisa and Christine. Again, it's a blessing to work with people that I already, I already know and am familiar with, but it's also an added benefit to be amongst people who are so willing to help and the kindness that they have extended, including the teachers in this room, who we've been working a little bit more closely last Friday. So, it was, you know, and sometimes out of the greatest need comes some opportunities for some really beautiful things to happen, including that sense of community and bonding that I think certainly was a positive that could come out of something which wasn't pleasant for anyone, as I'm sure. So, that's what I'd like to say. So, thank you. So, on to version three of the budget. So, if you're ready. Okay, so since version two, and per our discussion at our last school committee meeting, in your packet you'll notice that Steve Pello has provided an updated version three tech budget for middle school in particular. There was- There was a slight update he wanted to make, so that's in there. You'll notice that that's a version three, but it's a, it's a minor change to the technology budget there. But in terms of the budget itself, we have reduced the budget by two full-time equivalency teachers, two FTE, which resulted in a reduction of about $120,000. We had the resignation of a custodian. And so, we have posted that position from a 12-month to a 10-month, which resulted in about a $9,000 reduction. Christine has adjusted the health insurance. It is now at 3%, which produced a reduction of about $57,000, about $28,000 for each percentage point. Christine also adjusted the sub calculation. And while she, she estimated with the new $95 per hour rate, she felt that she could adjust each line item by about $5,000 to help bring us a little bit closer to our goal. So, she adjusted the substitute calculation as well. There are a few increases to the budget since the last time, things that we've added, I should say. As a result of the reduction in FTE, we have put in $15,000 for unemployment. We have increased the budget to include a .5 FTE Allied Health teacher at about $30,000. The other half of that position will be paid with the Perkins branch, the other .5 FTE. And we have increased the nurse leader, the .5 FTE nurse leader at about $40,000. That was an addition. Overall, the budget was decreased by $111,475, which resulted in an overall operating budget of increasing 2.91% since last year. You have a summary sheet in your packet and then you have the summary and the detail. Any questions?
Warren, can I? I'm just wondering, looking at the two versions of the technology budget, where is that difference reflected? Like, I don't see that on the summary sheet.
His summary sheet had to be updated. We did not update in the financial. His summary sheet just had not been updated to reflect what was in the financial.
Okay, so that's not.
It was a $900 difference under the middle school. The.
But when I look at these two sheets, the one that says version two and one that says version three, I guess I'm not seeing, I'm seeing a difference between the two, obviously. And I'm not sure where that's reflected.
I believe what you're showing is when we, when we came to our last meeting, the January meeting, we had already sent out a version one of the budget and his backup balance to that. But we found some things on that day that changed. So, we came to the school committee with a version two of the budget. His items had not been updated to reflect that. So, what you're seeing is his prior version was actually the very first version that was emailed to you that we never discussed because we already had one that superseded that.
This should probably say version.
Version one.
His versions do not coincide with my versions. His versions are, he has a standalone version system.
All right. So, his version two corresponds with our version one?
Our original budget version one, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But the current version does reflect what's in this current budget version three.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This may just be an accounting issue, but in the changes, nurse leader half position is $40,000. Isn't Allen Portman only $20,000?
That's a good question.
No, there is some confusion about that. The Silver Lake budget will be absorbing the full $40,000 .5 position, but the offset to that will be a revenue because when we share that with the towns, we have an increased revenue from that.
Okay, that's.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee so far? Any direction for the superintendent that you'd like her to spell out for us, explain?
Did I ask on the previous meetings, is the bus contract? Are we?
We are in the process of, we're close of getting it out to bits. So, I do not have more concrete numbers to use to adjust the budget.
Do we think we'll have those numbers before the next meeting? Or is that too tight?
It's very tight. I do not know if I can come into that.
Under employee benefits, I just want to make sure we have a narrative again for the 12.25% increase. It's a $120,000 increase in employee benefits. Christine, can you just explain for anybody who wasn't aware of what that number is and where it's coming from?
The major contributing factor to that of $110,000 is for our Plymouth County retirement assessment. Our assessment went up, they were projecting that they would be going up about 18%, Osborne up 15%. And it's per their actuarial studies. They do actuarial studies based on the employees that we currently have in place at this time. And that is, they're, they're trying to be fully funded by 2030 and this is getting them on that path. And unfortunately, it was a huge impact to us for this year.
Can you just delineate a little bit who, or which group of our employees is covered by this group, please?
This is the non-teaching staff. Teachers are covered under mass teachers retirement. This would be our support staff, custodians, paraprofessionals, clerical. Those are the employees that are included in this. And part of the retirement system is we need to make an annual contribution based on an actuarial study of the employees that are currently included.
Anybody from the committee?
I was just going to add to what Christine said about the pension here, retirement. We just got notice for the rest of our Kingston employees with Plymouth County and we're looking at 16% increase, which is about $300,000 more than we have in the budget for it. And I've asked for a meeting with Tom O'Brien to better understand, you know, because one of the things I look at is the stock market had a great year. And when you're doing pension valuations, you would expect that that might help, but it obviously didn't. And preliminary numbers I'm seeing is our overall payroll in Kingston over the last, I think it's like five years, is up about 30%. So, when you build that in, you can kind of understand pension expense going up. And then what you said, the fact that we're trying to get fully funded by 2030 or so, you don't have as much room.
No, we're a room.
Exactly. So, I sympathize with you on that one.
We had asked for a clarification also because that was very significant. And we were, we're just weren't prepared for that at all.
So, I just, we wanted to make that point because about a half a percent of our budget increase, the 2.91% you're seeing, is coming directly from that one number. And again, this is an obligation. We have to be employees who've given us their best years and to make sure that they can retire at a company. It was an uncontrolled cost. Obviously, it's something we have to face, but I wanted just to make sure everyone was clear. A half a percent yearly of our budget is coming directly from that one.
So, the pension for Plymouth County expects to get an 8% return per year on their investment as well as they expect the town's payrolls to grow by 4% each year with the costs increasing. So, if you had a 35% over five years, you've grown faster than what they expected. So, your increase is going to be larger. And when you have more retirees.
Any other questions in the areas of the budget you'd like the superintendent to discuss?
Is the number for Kingston going to be between the two schools? Is it going to be affordable? We heard from Halifax. We haven't heard from Clinton, but are you, are you going to be?
I suspect we will be trying to sell it as affordable. However, it gets us closer and closer to the limit that is not affordable.
So, what is your levy increase this year? About $800,000?
A little over $800,000.
Eight fifty, eight forty-five.
So, you're going to take over 50% of the levy with just Silver Lake. And then what was the total increase for the elementary school?
3%.
So, is that about the same $400,000?
Yeah.
So, you're looking at a 2.5% increase for just the schools this year before anything else?
Right.
Okay.
Tonight is more of us seeing where we are, thinking about what's sustainable for the towns, but also thinking of what Charlie said, making sure that we maintain a competitive campus up here with our middle school and our high schools. So, we don't end up in that death spiral of having people relocating their children to charter schools in alternatives. Obviously, tonight is not the night of the vote. Tonight is a night for us to put ideas out there where we see this go. We do have a tri-town finance committee meeting on the Monday after vacation in Halifax. And I would like to be able to walk into that meeting to be able to speak on behalf of the committee of where we are and what we're aiming for. Go ahead.
With the Sacred Heart High School closing, is it possible that we're going to see an increase of students applied to charter schools that weren't previously covered? And we're going to see our chapter 70 number reduction from that?
It's possible. The reasons for going to a private school sometimes can be very different from the reasons that parents choose to send their children to a charter school. So, we can't say it will, we, we can't even give you an estimate of, you know, what that division might look like. What we can tell you is that there are currently 38 students eligible in the Silver Lake District. 10 at the middle school, 28 at the high school. So, some of those students, we presume, will return to the Silver Lake School District. Some of those students may attend a different private school. Some of those students may opt to go to a charter school. There's any, or they could decide to homeschool. There's any number of combinations that could occur and we can't give you those numbers. We can just tell you the maximum impact of students who could be moving as a result of that school's closure.
Just one other question. So, on vocational placements, there's a cutoff date of April 1st. Is there a cutoff date for charter schools?
I think they accept students until their enrollment is filled. They have their own arbitrary number date that they put out there for enrollment, but they don't have that same regulatory.
Is there a date in which our chapter 70 funds are no longer removed if a student enrolls late? Just asking because that would be another thing to bring up with the legislature.
I know October 1st is the numbers they typically use for making those determinations. A mid-year parochial going to charter who's a member of our communities, I couldn't answer that for you off the cuff. It's something we'd have to check with Desi to see how they would handle that.
Good, thank you.
Jason, can I just check with Desi?
Yes.
Can I just add, are you, are you talking about the measurement for charter schools? Or are you talking about the measurement for local school districts?
I'm asking about it, what's the cutoff date? If a student enrolls at a charter school, would they take the money from, what's the?
So, I can tell you from experience that last year where I worked, we experienced significant increases in our assessments due to charter enrollments that were measured up until April 1st. So, we had set our initial budget back in January, February timeframe based on chapter 70 funding that was available at that time. It was significantly impacted two months later, right before town meeting, where we had to come up with another $1 million to cut from the budget in order to fund the increased assessment in charter. So, it does, it's not the October 1 enrollment date that you're used to here.
So, it's, it's April, just like vocational?
There was some discussion about aligning that, but that has not changed.
So, that could drastically change.
It could.
All right. Budget.
So, I was actually trying to do the math to see how many students we would need to have come here to offset one student going to the charter. I haven't come up with that number. It's probably a 2.25. Somewhere in the ballpark. So, yeah, obviously Sacred Heart closing down is something interesting. Year is open and our eyes on the ball, but we need to work with the figures we have in front of us right now. Something else I'd like to make sure that we're cognizant of, looking at this 2.91% increase, is this not taking into account the additional chapter 74 funds we would get next year if Allied Health does get its full certification, correct?
So, so, yes, I think I understand what you're saying. Could you repeat that one more time?
Sure. So, with a CTE program with full recognition from Desi as a certified chapter 74, we would receive additional dollars for every student enrolled in Allied Health to bring us up to that number, which is not a chapter 74. It's a part of $5,000 increase per people. Is that number of the additional funds for the Allied Health CTE students part of this number? Or is this 2.91% actually going to drop once we get that certification?
This is our increase of our budget.
Right.
And then the assessment pieces are ever taken into account, any increase or decrease in our chapter 74 funds.
Right.
And I have not made any significant changes on that side.
So, the way we discuss that is the number's 2.91% increase, but our assessment numbers that we're currently putting out there might actually be reduced once the chapter 74 certification goes through for the Allied Health program.
Or our revenue may actually be increased.
Okay. I just want to make sure again that we have that narrative in place for one of the reasons why we're making it a priority to add that Allied Health position to the budget. I know it's a $30,000 increase on paper, but I want to be able to explain that we're hoping it's a cost neutral addition to the budget once we get the chapter 74 funds.
We vote the budget, we vote the assessment. Those are the numbers that we vote that go out. So, there would be no change after that.
Our revenue would go up?
Yeah.
So, we'd end the year a little bit.
With higher revenues than expected.
And that would go to E and D and potentially capital plan or back to the towns if you exceed the 5%. Okay. Eric?
I just wanted to add about Sacred Heart. I do know some folks who are over there. I know there is an effort right now of parents who are trying to keep it open. I don't know how successful that would be. But I also know that other private Catholic schools are, you know, one of the biggest things going to private schools costs and a lot of them offer scholarships, a lot of them do. And there's multiple schools offering that to continue their scholarships at their schools. So, you know, they were only paying four grand, not the 16. It's the same at the other schools that are offering the same thing, just to finish out their school. So, and based on conversations with them, many of them are adamant about continuing the Catholic education. So, I don't think we're going to see many come back here. I mean, maybe we will. I mean, we actually did, was it third grade in Kingston? I think they said. I think we had somebody come from Sacred.
Yes, I remember that.
Yeah, so we may see a few, but probably not many. And the idea was the parents said they want their child to stay in state and just go away out.
I just had a question of something in here that I hadn't noticed before. For the psych contracted services, just wondering if, I want to understand the increase. It's the page 11, towards the bottom. It's a seven, it's a 700% increase and it's about $50,000.
All right. If you look at FY '19, you'll see that we've spent a pretty significant amount of money in FY '19 compared to prior years. What has started is there's a recovery high school and we have students attending the recovery high school. And so, I've built into the budget for next year for those students.
So, those are not services that we could provide in-house, obviously? If that's, if that's the kind of program that it is?
Correct.
That's specialized high schools. I think there's a number of them now in the state. Good catch. Good catch. Big number, but obviously, we know that we might be seeing stabilization class sizes and even some grades that might be going down by a few, but the needs of the students who are coming into our schools, their needs are increasing, the complexities of our students is increasing. So I know lots of people say, well, you have a couple less students, you should have a couple less dollars you're spending, or should, that's not analyzing the true scope of what we're trying to do with the students. We're not trying to, but trying to hold them together and provide a well-rounded whole human experience for them. It's not just about how smart we are. Happiness and included stability, regulation, it's just things we have to take into account. Any other questions for our superintendent about the budget? Go ahead, Mike.
And I know I talked about it before, but on page eight on the grounds, so, so we're showing it, it's a twenty, twenty-one percent increase. Is there, is there something that's, is there something that's going on that we know is coming that's different from what we're at right now? Because we're under on this line now, so...
Correct, and there's still more for the, for the current year? For the current year, we're still under, is that what you're saying? Correct, there's a lot of work that happens.
So I'm just trying to figure out, I know I asked you the question before, so did we change the supplier, did we?
Well, there are two pieces. The FY twenty budget last year was cut under the grounds specifically, so that, if you look at the prior years, their activity has always been higher than what the FY twenty budget is, but it was cut for last year's, this current year's budget was cut for this specific line.
But we haven't, we haven't even used all our money yet.
Correct, there's a lot of work that happens once the winter's over, and then for the spring work for the fields.
Okay. So is this the work of the product? That's, I guess that's my question, because the product should already, sorry, probably already ordered, right?
We may not have...
Because it's, you know, it's coming around, so...
We may not have ordered the product for the fall, for the spring. I can't, I'm not sure about that.
Okay, so who gives you this line? Who gives you this?
I get this from our office director of facilities. And they support that with some, some backup.
I don't wanna give that one, because it's, we're under what, forty-five percent right now? And we have an increase of twenty percent for next year.
So a large portion of that will start to get spent in the spring season.
You also had one field that wasn't.
Right, that wasn't in use because it was being repaired.
Yeah.
So that'll be back up too.
Okay. Any direction for the superintendent and myself for that, for the tri-town finance committee?
I have a question. So we need to vote next month, right, on the budget? So one of the things I asked at the Kingston Elementary School Committee was whether we wanted to look at what additional cuts would look like. I mean, we know that we've been asked by Carl, I think, who's asking for another fifty thousand, Halifax, who's asking for another million or something. Just joking.
Good job, Eric.
It's a good amount. And what we've done in years past is we directed the superintendent to bring back what additional cuts would look like. The elementary school committee chose not to because we had already made cuts, significant cuts. And here we have as well. I don't think I necessarily wanna cut additional areas, but I think this is the time to, if anybody does want administration to come back and give us a thing, what it would look like, we'd have to do it. We'd have to ask for it now. Can't ask for it at the next meeting when we're voting.
I would ask for it now to see what it looks like. It doesn't mean that we have to follow through with that, but...
I would concur, but I would ask that we don't see any further reduction in teaching staff. I think that would be intolerable at this point, the fact that we've got a budget below a three, and we're on version three right now. If there is that pencil sharpening that can be done at this point, I think we've done a heck of a job sharpening pencils. I wouldn't mind having some options for potential further cuts of fifty to sixty thousand dollars. And that would be a ceiling, not necessarily doable, I understand, but with no reduction in teaching staff in addition to what's already currently on the table.
What is the schedule of town meetings this year? Who goes first?
Kingston's first, September second. I mean, I'm sorry, May second, I'm sorry. May second.
Clinton and Halifax the same night?
Same week. Halifax is Monday, Clinton's Wednesday.
Just so I understand, are you asking for a version four? Or are you asking for kind of the holocard list of essential actions?
Keep version three and create something like this for us and bring it to us at our next meeting. And obviously, you as the superintendent have the final say of how all the dollars are spent with line item discretion from the committee. We'll give you our best suggestions of where to go with that, but the bottom line is the number that we'd be aiming for. So we'll leave that in the comments, but try and give you some more guidance and potential. Does that sound fair to everyone? Leave the version three intact, come to us with potentially fifty to sixty thousand dollars of additional cuts, and then it will be up to us to decide if any of those cuts actually take place, or if we just stop at the two-point-nine-one percent.
And I think that's how we did it in the past. We kind of had a holocard, you know, here's twenty, here's ten, that sort of thing. But obviously, we don't wanna hinder education, you know, we're not trying to hurt anything, and we're just trying to see if there are places where we might be able to find additional money in response to finance committee from the two towns.
Gordon, Clinton's is on May fourteenth. That's the... All right. Want to take us through the assessments?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have an assessment presentation for you tonight. Kristin and I will present the FY twenty-one assessments. As we were, as we work with building principals and the technology director and the special education director, we always keep our school's mission in mind in aligning our budget with our mission. We are committed to fostering the academic and social emotional growth and providing diverse opportunities to meet our student needs and protecting and ensuring both the structures and the quality programming is essential to us. So while we strive to understand and respond to the fiscal priorities of our towns, it is critical that we sustain and improve upon the framework that supports student opportunities to learn and what students have the opportunity to learn through high-quality educational programming for all students within Silver Lake Regional School District. This includes safe and secure facilities, instructional resources, including technology, appropriate staffing levels to support educational programming. We have also outlined our district-wide goals and the player for success, which we, we need your support in order to do, in order to make those things happen. We, and finally, the budget also allows us to continue to pursue our Chapter Seventy-four approval. One of the questions that we were kind of skirting around is that each tuition student in approved Chapter Seventy-four program brings in ten thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars extras in FY twenty. So that's, gives you some, some dollar cents in terms of what that, that means to us. So our programs, our personnel, our operations are what drive our budget. It is developed to enhance and maintain teaching and learning initiatives, and approximately eighty percent of our budget is staffing. And I, I think we all agree and understand the importance of effective teaching and maintaining teachers because they are paramount to the success of our students. So we have taken steps to save money through our in-district special education programs, a capital plan to maintain facilities, which is funded through E and D, in-house snow removal, in-house technology services. We have some green initiatives such as recycling and LED bulbs. We're happy to report that the roof repairs are complete. We are pursuing additional options, and we're constantly thinking about ways that we can, we can save money. There are some potential risks in this budget for FY twenty-one that we should, that you should be aware of, the potential for state or federal funding cuts, further reductions in grants such as Title I and Title II A. And I have spoken to you before about the risk, not only to Title I and Title II A grants, but other grants in general, and the types of things that we support with our grant funding. Unforeseen and unfunded mandates from the Massachusetts Department of Education. So for an example, you've, you've heard about these things that we are required to do by law. The most recent one that we will be introducing to you in a, in an upcoming school committee meeting is the Student Opportunity Act. So that additional thirty dollars per student that we are held harmless and were able to receive, what comes along with that, the requirement of that money, is that we create a plan as to how we're gonna use those funds to close achievement gaps. So it is a prescribed way in which we must use those funds.
At least we got the short form.
Yes, we did get the short form. Thank goodness. So that's just kind of a little bit of insight of the types of things that can kind of develop almost overnight and have an effect or an impact on, on what you think are funds that we could use at our discretion, but we're, we will, we will work within our, our goals and our budget to try to, to meet, we have to meet those requirements, so we will do We have, we, there's always the, the potential for unanticipated special education out-of-district placements, the charter school and private school enrollment, which I will talk more about in the next slide. We've talked about already the Sacred Heart closing and how that could potentially impact, but again, we don't have exact numbers for that. The loss of students to school choice impacts our Chapter Seventy, and approximately eight thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars per student in FY twenty, for a total of ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty for the loss to, how it impacts our Chapter Seventy funding for FY twenty. Aging buildings, technology and equipment upkeep, weather-related costs and stove-stove cleanups, and insurance costs. So while it has been decreased for this budget at three percent, it is still an estimate at this point. So let's take a look at students attending in-state or out-of-state private schools. Overall, since 2013, the number has declined. Since last year, we saw a slight increase by twenty, but overall, it was down by seventy-three overall, but since last year, the number of students going to private school increased. Might be a sign of a recovery.
It could be an anomaly. We'll wait and see if the data continues to trend.
So then charter school enrollment has increased since, did I, sorry, I didn't know if I had this, I can't see that far.
That is charter school.
That's the slide I'm speaking to, to be quite honest. Sorry. So charter school enrollment has increased since 2013 by thirty-eight students and by one since last year. So let's talk about the impact of that in this next slide. You all have it in your packet, so if you're farsighted or nearsighted, we have tried to accommodate both, both needs here tonight. The total expense of charter school tuition was one hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars in 2013, about, on average, nine hundred and sixty-nine, nine thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars per student. By 2020, we're looking at eight hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars, an average of fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety-one per student. The difference between 2013 and today is six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Now that's the product of both an increase in numbers of students attending the charter schools and the formula shift and change. So it's a moving target to add to our dismay. So the percentage of students attending charter schools are there at the bottom. We've gone from twenty students in 2013 to fifty-eight by 2020. And the percentages are listed there at the bottom. This is a familiar chart to you as well. This is to compare the per-people cost with similar districts. In this case, we're looking at districts seven through twelve. It's very difficult to compare regional school districts because the...
Do you have a favorite?
They, they can be very different, so we, but we, we say that with the respect that they are similar in the sense that they are all seven-through-twelve districts. And you can see where we fall within other districts that are seven-through-twelve regional school districts.
And some of them are also from different state county offices.
Yes, so it's, it's, these are not our dark schools that we would typically compare ourselves up against in terms of academically or demographics. But we, we need to be careful that we compare ourselves to seven-through-twelve schools because the, because regional schools carry different expenses than traditional, non-regional schools and pre-K through twelve districts where the cost associated with elementary school can be very different than the cost associated with secondary schools. So this is our, our best effort at giving you a comparison of schools that are similar to us. And now onto Christine, who has helped me greatly through every step of this process and should, I wanna publicly thank.
Oh, you're welcome.
Would you like me to advance this slide for you?
That would be delightful, thank you very much. Then I can focus on one thing at a time. All right, the assessments, the fun part of tonight. As you know, the assessments are heavily influenced by the budget, revenues, Chapter Seventy funding, and minimum contribution by town. All these create an impact for the assessments. The state aid for us is now at about thirty percent. I was talking about a third of our funding, now it's at thirty percent, so that number is declining. This year's actual state aid was a net increase of forty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars over last year's state aid. As you can see on this slide, the biggest contributing factor is the required minimum contribution and the change that has had. In total, the change was four hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Of that, Kingston's was a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase for this year's What I did wanna say is if you just look on your sheets, on page thirteen, I'm just gonna skip ahead for that, that was about our revenue sources. So I just kind of quickly wanted to mention the different components of the revenue, of revenues that we have. Of these items that are listed here, the only one that's changed much since last year is shared cost, and that is because we made a decision to include some positions at shared cost that previously weren't shared cost. So the revenue coming in from shared cost has gone up a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars versus last year. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that they, it's changing that. All right, and then on page fourteen, it's just a visual representation of all the different types of revenues we have. All right, now I want to go back to page twelve. Sorry. The next one, the next page?
No, I didn't.
There it is. Okay. So now we have our calculations. So what I do is I collect all the information, and then I hold my breath as I start with the numbers and to see where we're gonna end up. And then as I start doing that, I start with the budget. That's the first place, that's where I start. I have to start with the budget that we've been looking at. So this is based on using version three of our budget. Then I have to look at, I have to subtract from that the non-net school spending items. So that includes transportation costs and equipment costs, those are subtracted. And then I reduce that number further by all of our revenues, the revenues that I know... And then I reduce that number further by all of our revenues, the revenues that I know of at this point in time. And then I have to start, if you look at the assessment, I mean, if you look at the assessment steps here, so all those steps happen before step two. So step one concludes all those items. Step two is where we assign minimum contribution, and that's an amount that I get per Desi. That's determined by community. I don't have an influence over that. And then we start adding back items. We add back the transportation that I reduced in step one, the equipment that I reduced in step one, and that's done by community based on their percentage of enrollment. On the bottom of the sheet, you'll see how each percentage of enrollment is calculated, and that is based off of our October 1 numbers. Then I have to add back our capital, the debt that we have on our buildings. In this year's budget, it's $1.5 million, and that's added purely based on enrollment. Then the final step is putting all those together and see where we land. And as you can see, once, page, the very last page is the fun page, on the very last slide, second to last slide for you. There it is. These are our assessments based on all of that information, once it comes together. And I think what everybody's looking to see is the very bottom, the very bottom of that page, where it shows what happens to our assessments based off of all this information that we have, the budget, the revenues, minimum contribution. This is the result of all of that. And as you can see, the increases that have happened, and Kingston has the largest increase based on their net minimum contribution going up so dramatically. Overall, the increase of FY '21 assessments over '20 is 2.99%. So we're going to have to talk to Charlie because he had a slightly different number, and we'll have to see how he calculated that because it's different than what I have. The increase here is 2.99%. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Christine?
The good news is Good did his own, ran through his own assessments and came up to the same place I did, so I'm glad to have a confirmation. Have you done one?
No.
Oh, okay.
Mary's the other one that can help us out with that.
Mary's spreadsheet looks pretty...
So if I can upchair in prerogative and launch into my legislative update, I think it would go hand in hand with the budget and the assessment. I had lunch with Senator Lewis three weeks ago. Senator Lewis is one of the co-chairs of the Joint Committee on Education with Rep. Peish, and I expressed our concern over the $13 per pupil minimum increment increase and asked why were we left out of the formulation when it was rewritten? Senator Lewis tried to assure me that we weren't left out, that every district will receive some of the funds. Our funds will come in terms of charter school mitigation reimbursement over the next four years. We should see an increase to that budget item, and we should also see more money coming back to us in the former circuit breaker since transportation can now be calculated in. With the reformulation of the foundation budget, they moved the assumed amount of students with disabilities attending our schools from 15 to 16%, even though Desi clearly states that the state average is 18.4%. So I challenged Senator Lewis on that number, and he did bring me up to speed that there is legislation right now being discussed at the State House called the Gap Special Ed Funding Bill that would raise that number for fiscal year '21 to the 18.4%, and it would be tied to Desi's reporting out. It wouldn't be an arbitrary number that legislators not on the ground would pick out of the air. So that's potentially an area that we could see some relief. I was lucky enough to have coffee with Rep. LaNatra on Monday, and she was fully aware of that Gap Special Ed Funding Bill. She actually was in a conference this week with members that are supporting this piece of legislation. She also assured me that she and Rep. Cutler from the Duxbury area are pursuing a $100 per pupil minimum increment for our communities on South Shore. 57% of the communities in Massachusetts are only getting the $30 next year. So I know that we've talked about a $1.4 billion investment in education over the next seven years. We are not directly seeing much of a change in our budget from that. The per pupil minimum increment is the area where we need to aim at. Obviously, if we can get something back from circuit breaker, that can help us. But remember, circuit breaker is always giving us money for the year we've already built. They're reimbursing us for dollars we've already spent. And in that vein, I was in Washington DC on the 4th, and I met with Congressman Keating and his staff to ask for full funding of the Individuals with Disability Education Act. They're supposed to pay at the federal level 40% of our extraordinary cost to educate students with disabilities. Currently, they're funding about 15%. They need to increase their allocations from $15 billion a year to $40 billion a year, and is bicameral bipartisan legislation right now to fully fund IDEA, and Congressman Keating is actually a co-sponsor on that bill. So this is another area where we could potentially see $2 to $2.5 million more dollars come into our three elementaries and our region if they fully funded IDEA.
How does that money flow currently? Does it go through the state to us?
Goes through the state, then it's redistributed out.
But through the Chapter 70 funding, or how does that, I'm not aware of any federal funding flowing back into the...
I don't want to misquote, so let me do my background to make sure where that flows directly, okay, before I say it publicly. Go ahead.
What about regional transportation?
I'll get to that. No, it's okay. We're speaking about funding half of our teacher out of the Perkins Grant. Perkins Grant, again, is a federal act that funds career and technical education. There's been some talk from the Department of Education in Washington under Betsy DeVos of taking some of those Perkins funds and reallocating them for adult education in private settings for career and technical education. I obviously expressed our disapproval of that reallocation of the funds, and I told him the story of our allied health program and how the Perkins Act was how we got that entire program off the ground, and now we're going to be able to translate that into Chapter 74 funds. So he said that was a valuable story for him to hear. And I also brought up our Title I funds and said since FY '17, our Title I funds have diminished by about 40% in district. We had about $350,000 in FY '17, and now we're down to about $200,000 in FY '20. So I asked for some relief in that aspect and wasn't too comfortable saying that there could be relief in Title I for us. Again, there's means tests, and we're one of those communities that on paper looks too wealthy to qualify for some of these assistance programs. The other piece of good news, though, is there is some federal legislation about infrastructure, and schools have actually been added to some of those discussions. Usually, it's just roads and bridges, but there's a contingent of congresspeople bringing schools into the idea, and their baseline starting point is $100 billion for schools in the infrastructure bill that's being discussed right now. We know MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority, has kept moving the markers for how we can qualify for roofing assistance. So I know Governor Baker put some extra money in for MSBA in his version of the budget, but the federal government's also looking into how they can help repair some of our schools as well. Talking about transportation finally, I spoke with Kathy about, there was a subcommittee formed to look at transportation costs for schools around the state, and this was mostly brought up by municipalities who are not part of regional schools who resent the fact that some regional schools get reimbursed for transportation costs. Right now, we are supposed to get 100% of our transportation costs reimbursed from the state. We're lucky if we get 70 to 80%. The report coming out of the subcommittee is very, very scary. They're talking about lowering that number to 50% right off the bat. So you imagine if we got 30% of our transportation budget taken away from us, what the impact would be right here tonight on us. They're talking about adding a means test, so now we'd have to qualify for that 50%. And they're talking about letting municipalities, Plymouth is actually one of the towns that's really pushing this, they have a lot of miles that they drive, they're looking for some relief for their transportation costs, but it might come out of our pool of funds for regional transportation. So Kathy is on that. She is making sure that, she's keeping me up to date on where that is coming out of committee and whether it's not, it's being taken out on the floor of the legislature.
Since you're on TV, and someone may watch, you may just want to mention how, why regional transportation is supposed to be covered by the state, the promise 50 years ago.
Right, so in an attempt to have a cost-cutting between towns that didn't necessarily need to have their own overhead for administration, so instead of having three superintendents across our towns, the idea was to bring us together so we could share the cost of administration, we could also share the resources of our schools, and the promise to us was that regional transportation would be paid for if we agreed to do this, because you lose some of your autonomy. I mean, we have members from three different communities here, and our communities are obviously similar in some ways, but we have some of our own differences. So to bring us to a table to collaborate over a budget, that was one item that was going to be taken off the table from us to incentivize us and to join in together. The thing that's really scary about this is the governor right now, one of his main goals is further regionalization of towns and municipalities for other departments besides just schools. And I would just say, this is a cautionary tale. They should discuss it with the regional schools before they jump into any regional deals with the state. Subject to appropriations is a very scary word, and unfortunately, that's how the legislators get away with making promises that they don't keep sometimes, is subject to appropriation. So I just wanted to let you know there's been a lot of work going on, both at the State House and at the federal level. I've been trying to get every dollar possible to our communities and to our schools and our students, and I'm going to keep fighting the good fight. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Let's move on to old business, please. So, you have any business?
We do.
You have any business?
I think I do. Oh, no, I don't.
You have any business? You sure?
Nope. I don't.
Okay. We call them all again if you want. So the next steps for dual enrollment opportunities, I've written to several community colleges asking them if they would take me in for a tour and an explanation of what their dual enrollment opportunities look like. I have heard back from one, and I'll give you updates as I gather further information on those topics. And I think we've already covered the vaping impact on our students and our schools. Continue to work with the attorney general, and I'll also bring some information back from that group of lawyers who's filing a class action lawsuit against the vaping industry as well. Moving on to reports of standing committees, Silver Lake Education Association.
Thank you. I'll be brief, but one thing I did want to talk about, we were speaking with MTA's regional manager about some of the Chapter 70 issues, and we just wanted to offer if there's any way that we could help with some of this legislative action and lobbying lawmakers to try to get more money from the new formula. You know, please let us know. We certainly are willing to help in any capacity that we can. I think we're all in the same boat on that. So, you know, I'm happy to collaborate with anyone on that who wants us to help out. Thank you very much.
I really appreciate that. Thank you. Administrative review. No need for you? No need? Okay. CTE, we heard about the open house that Elliot had for the eighth graders, and onto chairman's report. I would just like to take a moment to talk about what happened Friday here at the building, for any staff, students who were affected by that. I know that probably every single person was in this building. My thoughts and my prayers were with you the entire day from the moment I found out about what was going on until I heard from Jill on Monday afternoon at the completion of a successful school day. We were in constant contact throughout the process. There's so many different people I want to thank for how they stepped up to take care of our students and to take care of the faculty and to take care of one another. I'm sure I'm going to miss people. I know nothing is perfect in this world, but we have procedures, and we have procedures for a reason to deal with emergencies and crises, and obviously, that hard work, the thoughtfulness that everybody puts into what's they going to look like, how am I going to deal with the unknown and the unforeseen, is something that every teacher carries into their classroom every single day, and I just want to applaud the dedication of everyone who is involved. I appreciate the interdepartment collaboration, seeing all the police cars and the fire engines and the ambulances from multiple towns, the mutually interarrived here to help us out. Just absolutely amazing. Communication, I know that some people wanted to have more information quicker, faster, let them know what's going on. We were following protocols to make sure that we had correct information. We didn't want to jump the gun on any of the communications without having reassurance from experts in the field, not just our lay opinions of situations. Really appreciate the fire chief from Kingston helping us create the frequently asked questions and signing off on the letter that came out from the administration about what happened, the fact that we don't know what the substance was. We had teams come in here and check surfaces and take air quality measurements, and they all came back clean. We ran the building all weekend long and had decontamination crews in here, and we had emergency personnel and staff ready on Monday for any eventuality. You know, obviously, there's things to be learned from every situation, and we'll take all of those items and we'll go over them with a fine toothbone, adjust practices where necessary, double down on the areas where things worked perfectly. But having no students at the high school at this point, I know that can seem removed, but I called every single friend of mine who had a child here at the high school to see how they were doing, to see how the parents were doing that night, and I heard lots of compliments about their teachers and how their teachers really kept them calm and feeling safe in a very, very unknown situation. So thank you very much to the staff and to the teachers of Silver Lake High School. Michaela, thank you for your leadership and your guidance. And Jill, thank you for your communication and organization of the situation, and to all those other departments, my thanks will be with them forever.
Took a tea, and they did a great job, so I feel very grateful to have been able to work with them. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Onto negotiations.
We'll be discussing executive session.
PAC?
Well, PAC has moved out of the facilities in Pembroke Center. They've occupied the facilities that they have in Plymouth and the industrial park. Had a tour of the place, and it was kind of nice.
Paulus? No need?
We received an update from MAS C. We have not had a chance, there are numerous suggested edits, so we're going to need a little bit of time, but we are working on it, and we hope to set up a policy subcommittee as soon as possible.
How about revolving funds?
No means on revolving funds.
All right. Safety facilities, you have any?
We did have a meeting. We will be discussing the capital plan next month.
Okay. Time, no updates on school start time and treasures report?
Good day. So we have 19 total accounts payable, total of $1,158,658 and 1 cent. We had three payrolls. Total payroll was $2,510,813.99, for a grand total of $3,669,472.
Thank you. And we haven't had any meeting of Union 31 in a while, which is kind of nice for a change. All right, did we have any single signature ones?
No.
Oh, good. Some future meeting dates to remember. After tomorrow, it's vacation. I hope you guys all enjoy your vacation, even if you're staying home. The next in-service day for teachers will be the Monday after vacation, February 24th, and we will have our next school committee meeting on March 12th. Please don't forget, February 24th is also the Tri-Town Finance Committee meeting in Halifax. If any of you would like to attend, you're more than welcome to be there. I will now accept a motion to adjourn to executive session only to return to... I will now accept a motion to adjourn to executive session only to return to regular session for purposes adjournment. The reasons for this executive session is to discuss Silver Lake Education Association and Silver Lake Support Staff contract negotiations discussion pursuant to Master General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. Still a minute. Second. All right. We'll call Mike.
Yes.
Go ahead. Yes. Laura?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And me. Yes. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate your time. This is a record.